... subdivision. Do you want to start with Fox Run subdivision? Okay, we have ten minutes. We did get a letter.
We did.
Today. It's here.
I thought there was a separate email or something that came.
There was a separate email. Well, it is slightly different, but this is, uh... This is gonna take more than ten minutes.
Yeah, so I'll put that over.
Let's do something that'll take less time.
Can we can approve meeting minutes?
That's true, we can. Did, um... Who was, um, reading the minute meeting? Was it you, Walter? Are you the one that was there?
Yeah, uh, okay, there are, uh... Actually, these date back to last year and they're under John's bailiwick, but if... Sorry, with him, I'll read.
You're welcome to.
I'm sure you would, okay. I move to accept the minutes of meeting of April fourteenth, twenty fifteen, and May nineteenth, twenty fifteen.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Town meeting warrant articles, dude, did... Are there any warrant articles that...
Right.
That are zoning articles?
I don't know that we've seen it.
There was supposed to be something, right?
What?
We talked about doing more work on the IP one, but...
Yeah, not for the spring, though. We usually do the warrant articles for the fall. The zoning articles for the fall.
Yeah.
I have a few things, but I'm holding off until the fall.
Yeah, if anyone else has any good ideas on something that they wanna have Ray work on, because I know that things have come up that have been in conflict. If anyone can remember what they are, please let Ray know. Because he hasn't been here long enough for some of these conflicts. I think that some of the conflicts are like parking and things like that for like places like, like right next door and...
Just for the, just to continue the conversation, Bob Bullock and I have worked on the sign ordinance, the bylaw, I mean, and there's certainly some, some things that we could do there with that sign bylaw, because it's... On one respect, it's very restrictive. Another respect, it's very permissive, so you can ask for a special permit on just about anything. But, you know, just as we did with the, uh, the gas station Dunkin' Donuts, you could use the bylaw to put up just about any sign, so there's, there's no, there's no middle ground. Try and work on something to help, help with that middle ground and say what we're really looking for.
Well, I thought that the, the bylaw worked out really well for that gas station Dunkin' Donuts. I thought that... Turned out to be larger than we expected, but the sign, the individual signs were the proper size, right?
The signs were the proper size, but it was the number of signs, and then it was also to have bigger signs. And in some cases, they wanted some bigger signs, so there's a section in the zoning bylaw, section four HC or something like that, that anything that's beyond the, the maximum requirement or the maximum allowed, you use that and you ask for a special permit. And if it's reasonable, you know, we're playing board use.
I don't think they got it for down there, though.
Yeah, they did.
They did? For which ones?
I think it was number of signs, because they had more than the, uh, the maximum required size.
Yeah, would be good.
How did we end up with the Joffreyan sign?
That's off right now.
It, it is off. I have noticed that it's not been turned on.
Bob is working with them. Um, I'm not sure where, where it's at right now, but he is, he is having discussions with them.
Oh, interesting. I thought I saw a hand up over here. Did I see a hand go up? No? Oh, do we have any correspondence, Betsy?
Um, I don't believe we do.
Do we have any other new business?
Yep, all right, there you go. Think I got them all. Check me.
Yeah. All right. Now, you reviewed the Alexander Estates plan? Is it ready for endorsement?
Yes.
There's no comments?
I did have Gino take a look at the, the deeds. He's got more experience with me than...
Yeah.
He had some comments. We sent that right back to Dan. He made the modifications to those that I know.
So if someone wants to make a motion to endorse the, um, Alexander Estates, this, this is the whole subdivision, right?
Correct.
This is for the, the open space?
Yeah, definitive open space subdivision plan.
So if someone wants to make that motion, we can sign that now and get that out of the way before, before we adva- advance to the next, uh, hearing.
She can't.
Oh, that's right, she can't.
Motion to approve the Alexander Estates open space definitive subdivision to endorse the milars and to sign the covenant.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
I'm recused.
Give the covenant, Betsy?
So we can sign that at our leisure? And actually, I'm just gonna sign it now.
John, there's just two copies, one for them and one for us.
Yes? Yep, just talking to it. I was just getting ready to leave. The Bombay, I, I'm here to help the Bombay family tonight. Been in Toronto thirty-five years, and he's disposed tonight. Called me this afternoon, asked if I'd come over. I'm also a developer and consultant. I've known him for a long time. I was here to answer any questions. He sort of briefed me on things, and so if... I'm gonna send him a text message when I leave here that you sign the milars and the covenant, and they're all set. There's, there's no questions that I need to hang around and answer or anything like that.
I think they've taken care of everything.
Yeah?
Yeah, this is just a formality tonight.
That's wonderful.
You can count this as a favor to his.
We have nervous nellys that had me come out tonight.
Right.
Thanks, guys.
Chuck up any favors you can get.
You just tell them you were here for hours. We put you through the ringer.
Have a good night.
I'll have those ready for them. They can pick those up tomorrow.
Okay, cool. I'll let them know.
Yeah.
How many sheets, Steve?
Thirteen.
Thirteen.
Lucky thirteen.
We've been through this stuff before.
He's gonna need an ice pack for his wrist while that's signing.
Yeah. You are mic'd, you know?
I know.
Is there anything I missed that we could have covered? I thought that, uh, that everything that was on the agenda, I, I brought up already.
Shire, Shire Park, we haven't talked about. I don't know how involved that is.
That one's gonna be difficult.
Okay. I think I might.
Oh, it's time. Okay, it's now seven forty-five, so we can start the, uh, the public hearing for Twenty-Nine Valley Street. This is continued from...
They've requested continuance, too.
Yeah. Continued from January twelfth. And there's a request for a continuance. So does someone want to make a motion to continue this?
Move to continue Twenty-Nine Valley Street until the March eighth meeting, two thousand sixteen, at seven forty-five.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, now... Fox Run subdivision. All right. So you're here because you're, you're requesting the release of the lots thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, seventeen. That's, that's the end of the lots, is that correct, or is, or are there more? Because I, I know that we got an email today that was pretty extensive with things that, um, the highway superintendent was not completely happy with. Have you, you've gotten the report?
Mr. Chairman, we received it at the end of the day on Thursday. And we reviewed it, and we received it upstairs.
I have a microphone?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman.
We received it on... Whoa. On Thursday, end of the day Thursday, um, from Bob McGee. It's pretty extensive. He did a thorough inspection of our subdivision roadways, and he has, um, a list of curbing and trenching repairs that he'd like us to, to fix. Since that time, I've spoken with Bob. Uh, we've talked with Bob, and we're meeting with him tomorrow morning to go over, to go over his punch list and to, to work out, um, a process of how we'd go forward to, to address his items. I will say that there's been some emails back and forth. Uh, I talked to Bob, and I think the, the, the expectation that you, that the board may have taken from his emails is not the impression I got from speaking with Bob in person. I think we're meeting tomorrow morning, and we're going to work through the issues, and, and although there was a number of, of items on the list, you know, there's nothing really, um, of serious significance.
Mark, I was gonna keep my mouth shut until you spoke up, but I had a conversation with Mo- Bob. And he's furious that for months and months and months, you've had open patches in this road, which compromises the integrity of the base course of this road, which has been a problem with this board forever. And you've ignored a simple five-minute patch in all of these areas. So this cooperation we spoke about, where we had this whole project on hold about working with the town, he's furious. So for you to come up and pronounce that this is all underway, I talked with him at five o'clock before, and I told him he didn't have to come to this meeting. I would relay his thoughts. You folks have totally ignored him. You've also ignored this management program you have to upkeep the road structure after this was stopped. And number one on this, and cleaning the streets twice a week, mainly at the end before of a weekend for the neighbors, he doesn't satisfy for months and months this road being filthy. So really, I mean, you're overlapping tube wood, you're overlapping conservation, because you're going into a wetland area, and you're overlapping this board that, that took you with your word that you're working with us, and I find out you've been ignoring him totally. He was totally exasperated with you folks. Because this road is gonna be ours, and you leave an open, uh, pit around these water gates or whatever. You've got the trenches that you put in for the easement already, already sinking in the road, so obviously the, the compaction wasn't proper. Where's the cooperative of working with, with, with Bob McGee and the town to, to fix these things as they come up? So now you're coming and professing that it's gonna be worked out, wanting... It seems like we're getting this, 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 everything is great and we're doing fine, when you want a lot released. He was exasperated. He was furious. He didn't know what to do. Almost like to the fact I'd like to put something in our meetings to hold off on approving this roadway for years, because the longer you leave all of these open spots in the pavement, the more you compromise the integrity of this going forward, rather than just a five-minute job to throw in some tar. It's incredible. I have no idea how, how you operate or why, but you're coming up here saying things that aren't true.
I did talk to Bob, and he was not exasperated on the phone with me at all, so I...
In, in that case, we'll have a meeting with him tomorrow, and we'll relay what he talked to me about. All right?
Did Ray, did Bob talk to you? Because he said he was gonna call about the, about the call to me, because, I, so I said, based on your emails, Bob, it seems, you know, the way I took it is you're very furious, and, and things are, are really unacceptable, and, and I didn't get that from the conversation. He was gonna call you and, and he was gonna relay that message to you.
Bob stopped in my office earlier today. Uh, we spoke about, about the problems that he's had over the years. On, on one hand, he, he's trying to keep calm about this and trying to make sure that, uh, he, he keeps on point and, and makes sure that the message is clear. On the other hand, he is exasperated. Last summer, um, him and I were out on site. We talked with John, we talked with Scott. We talked about some of these deficiencies that he found. One in particular was some, some concrete that was poured up against the sloped granite curbing. And in one, one location, there's a picture of it where it washed out. Looks like there was just a, a thin coating of, of concrete that was put down there. A simple enough correction, and, and it seemed to me that you could chip that out and put some concrete in and just take care of it over the summer. And, and, you know, my bad, but I just assumed that it would have been done. Now we come to this point, and if it wasn't for Jeff asking for us to take another look at it, um, we wouldn't be here. And thank you, Jeff, for, for making sure that we took another look at it. But this, this kind of stuff really should have been cleared up, um, months and months ago, well before you came to us. And, and, you know, I'm embarrassed for you that you have to come here and have to hear this time and time again. Your, your construction crew should have taken care of this. So Bob, on one hand, is, is trying to put a, put a smiley face on this thing, but since it's been five, six months that he's still dealing with the same silly problems, he's frustrated over the, over the whole process.
Who wouldn't be frustrated?
Yeah.
You're talking about a five-minute job, and maybe in fifteen different areas of the roadways, but a five-minute job on each one? And multiple times over, he's telling me six months to a year, and they ignore him? He just gets ignored.
Because what I got out of his letter was he was exasperated. There's no doubt, there's, there's no way you could mistake the exasperation. Because he, he was virtually saying, "This is road construction one oh one. This is how you do it. You have to do this, then this, then this, then this," and he just put it down like bullet points, exactly how you're supposed to do it. So for him to go through that type of an action, then he was pretty exasperated. There was no doubt in my mind that he was. So we have to get something done about this.
We're meeting with him tomorrow morning.
Yeah.
So my feeling on this has been that, you know, there were issues, um, with the subbase for Warren.
Excuse me, Jeff, I just texted Bob. You're exasperated. You guys are right on with an exclamation point. So you obviously are not getting the tone, the direction or anything from the conversation.
I think it misses the point, whether Bob's exasperated or not. I think the larger point here is that there's problems, a compromise, a substructure, it's been brought to the attention, and it's been ignored. So it shouldn't really matter if someone's exasperated. Someone shouldn't have to get exasperated to prove the point.
Right. It only matters that this is such a long continuum. It's, not only is it just in disrepair, this is beyond that. This is just...
What, which troubled me is that of the roadway. We, as a board, were willing to make do and allow, um, a subbase which wasn't what it should have been, because it would have cost literally hundreds of thousands of dollars to excavate the roadway and redo the work. So we said, "Okay, let's try to get this truck project back on track without requiring Pulte to go dig up the road on Warren Ave." I didn't feel good about it, but I heard what Bob McGee had to say, that the road will have time to settle, should be okay, but there is infrastructure under the ground in terms of piping and such, and so I'm not sure what kind of challenges we're gonna have as a town once the road is accepted. And we need to go in there perhaps to do some work. I don't know what it's gonna be like to try to dig through crushed ledge. But my thinking was certainly that, with the board being willing to do that, let's work together to try to get the project back on track. And John, in particular, working with conservation to try to correct some issues with drainage, that this project would be managed in such a way that people like Bob McGee would be listened to, and he would be a priority in terms of the future work taking place at the site as far as roadways and infrastructure. And the fact that that hasn't happened is inexcusable. And that's why I will not release lots until the situation is resolved. And I'm not sure what that means at this point, but I personally won't release any more lots.
The regular operations and management plan that was submitted before we released lots and we started to sign building permits of the one, two, three, six, seven items here, I doubt that one has been done.
What's the date on that, John?
Date of that is December second, two thousand fourteen. This is when they, uh, we agreed on the drainage that was to be done.
Yep.
And the roads and all of the basins that were full with debris and the oil separators, et cetera, they were gonna be maintained properly. And obviously, that, that was only a...
That was over a year ago when that happened?
Just about a year.
Yeah, I can only determine that's, that's some type of a ploy to get us to release lots. And it seems to me like the only time that we get satisfaction is when you need something, as compared to working cooperatively to do the right thing.
Right. That, that's why I raise a point about the, you know, it shouldn't take someone getting furious for there to be a meeting tomorrow. It shouldn't take somebody being exasperated for these things to get attention. They should be proactive. They should be followed up on, so I think it does, there's a whole bigger point here, I think, that's sort of screaming out.
If I may make a, a comment on behalf of another board, I would suggest you call the conservation office tomorrow, and we have you come in and talk about the maintenance of these roadways and the excess dirt going into the, uh, the resource area.
All right. So no lots are gonna be released tonight, that's for sure. So you're meeting tomorrow. Did you want to be put on the agenda for, um, our next meeting?
Yes, that would be great.
Okay, so we'll schedule it for eight o'clock?
We have something at eight.
Do we? Oh, oh, okay. Oh, they're, they're gonna be requesting it internally.
No, not even close. Very beautiful wooden sign.
Actually, they look really nice.
Yeah.
Just kidding.
You'll be much happier than...
I realize that, but still, they wanted to throw that at you, so you're not worried.
So eight fifteen, someone want to make that motion to, um, continue this till eight fifteen?
We don't have to continue, right? It's not a public hearing?
It's not a public hearing.
Oh, oh, that's right. It isn't. It's just a discussion. Okay, so we'll schedule you for eight fifteen on the eighth. Shire Industrial Park. That's a good one, because, um, someone wanted to develop a lot in there. And prior to the, um, prior owner, losing the land, or is that what it was? Bankruptcy, is that what it was?
Yes.
We told him that there would be no more development down that cul-de-sac until that road's put in. So now someone's come in with an application along that road, but...
The one that's not paved?
The one that's not paved, yeah. So we should probably stick with what we had said to the prior owner, right? That the roadway has to go to the, to the property line, which is what it should have done way back when. It was, it was in his, one of the directives in his preliminary report to extend the roadway to the...
And who got caught up in that with the folks at Five Phillips Way, right?
Five Phillips Way?
Isn't that the, uh, the group that got caught up in that?
Ask him that.
Maybe I got the address wrong, but the, the group that was building the, the...
Rental Center.
The rental center there, yeah.
Oh, that, that was a different issue. That was a completely different issue. It still had to do with access to the roadway.
Yeah, remember at our, at our meeting with, uh, the UPS fellow that we talked about? We had to determine the ownership of the road, since it was in, uh, taken in bankruptcy? And I think Ray has got some information on that.
I did some research on it. There's a, there's a covenant that was recorded, um, as part of the subdivision. They did something unique, which for me, it was unique. They said that the, the ownership of the roads, until the town is, takes over the roads, is equal parts to every one of the property owners within the development. So it kind of removes the owner from that equation, unless he owns a lot. So now that we own a lot, we're one of the partners in the ownership of, of all the roads in Shire Park.
Right, yeah.
So, so that, that's one issue. That's one, one problem. There is a bond in place. It's two hundred and eighty, or two hundred and seventy...
Seventy-two.
Two seventy-two thousand dollars, um, which buys this pavement. And I think you guys are well aware that, you know, there's, there were street trees that were proposed as part of the development. Chances out, we're not gonna be getting the street trees. But what, what...
Can we put in smaller trees and just have them catch up if they're...
I don't think we have the money to even do that, Steve. It's, it, it's tight. It's very tight with that.
Just a question, Ray. If, if the road is owned until accepted by the individual owners, and there's a road bond, who is the road bond, who's the third party in the road bond? Is it the old owner?
That's a good question. I don't, I don't know necessarily.
Because in theory, they're eschering some equity for the, uh, the third party in this agreement.
Yeah.
So, uh, if the owner puts in place at day one, but the, the covenants and the subdivision talk about the road being owned, jointly with the lot owners, of course, he'd have a big part when he owned all the lots, but then he would, you know, limit his, his part as the lots were sold. And I'm assuming that it's just not owning the lot, the, the road in front of your lot. It's a percentage of the whole roadway.
Yeah. I'll jump to the chase. Um, we've already had dialogue through our attorney, David DeLuca, with their attorney. The bank is ready just to give us the, the bond. So the two hundred seventy-two thousand is ours whenever we want that.
Cooperative bank still?
Correct. The issue that we really have here, and that's one of the reasons why I put this on, was in Fourteen Shire Drive, which is Island Light and Power, when they went to go and tie into the laterals that were supposed to be installed for the water mains, the laterals never got installed. So the water mains down the street, but the lateral's coming off of that water main to each one of the properties is non-existent. At least at Fourteen Shire and places that they were looking, it's non-existent, which...
They just put them in the wrong place?
Yeah, you sure it's not just somewhere maybe a little different?
Did they live them in the street?
No, the water gates are there. So the water gates are in the street, um, but there's no lateral coming off the water gate. So you've got the line, the water gate, and nothing going to the property line, which leads, leads us in a little bit of a predicament. Now, we've got, we've got time here between now and when all those lots are developed. We'd like to see the road paved. Obviously, everyone would like to see the road paved. So the problem is, we have to get those laterals in place for each one of these lots. We've got, again, minimal amount of money to do the paving. Now we've got to install laterals. It becomes a very precarious situation. What I'd like to do is I'd like, I've already got a call into, um, the O'Neills to have a conversation with them. They, I don't know if this is, this is on the record or off the record, but they've bought a couple of the properties within the development, so they, they've kind of made themselves one of the major property owners within the development. So they, and then with any other developer, any other property owners that exist there, I'd like to have a meeting, talk about the situation, talk about how we can resolve it, get the road paved, uh, maybe get the laterals in beforehand, if at all possible.
So in theory, what do you do? Use up all of the bond money and fix as much of the roadway as you can? And then the balance needed would be split between the lot owners?
Could be, yeah.
Right.
Well, is there other cul-de-sac that has to be constructed?
Yeah, there's two lots at the very end near that big masonry building that that cul-de-sac should be extended to. In looking, just as a sidebar, in looking at the, the site plans for the Taylor Rental Building, that cul-de-sac can remain in place as it sits today.
Right, yeah.
So there's no, from what I can tell, there's no real push to make that go away at this point. So there is a way to, to turn around when you come into that cul-de-sac. You have to see the site plan, just-
How much roadway has to be, be constructed and base coat paved? What length is, is needed to be base coat paved still?
You, you need everything, so it's not just-
It's gotta be graded.
Yeah, I'm not sure what's-
How many feet is that, like?
That's probably a hundred, it could be as much as two hundred feet. I, I'm not sure.
So you're gonna use up a good portion of the bond just to-
Exactly, yeah.
To get a base coat on the road.
You, you sent out something that had a map on it that showed the roadway today. Is it in our packet here?
I don't think so.
No.
No.
Is that the part of the road-
Do you know the one I'm talking about?
Ray, is that the part of the roadway that has potential ledge outcropping, sir?
Anywhere has ledge, could have ledge on that, that site. There's, there's a lot of ledge on that site. I, I find that, that is one of the issues, but I think it's one of the minor issues at this point. I think the, the, getting the laterals in place and getting that road paved and getting, you know, the infrastructure set up, I, I think is, is a larger issue that we have to resolve. I, I wanted to just brief the planning board on it tonight and let you know, there's more to come, there's more research that has to be done and some more discussions so that we can get to that, the right point in this place and just make a decision. But ultimately, it's the planning board's decision as to what we end up doing here. So any advice you guys have or any, any suggestions you have as to how to handle it, I'd love to hear it now, you know. But that, that is my approach at this point.
So is this new person that's applied for building on the pot, a lot with the unpaved area?
No.
I thought it was, I thought it was beyond the cul-de-sac that exists now.
Not to my knowledge.
Because we put in a foolish kind of truncated cul-de-sac at the entrance of a couple of driveways.
My question would be, Shire Park already has two methods of egress.
Mm-hmm.
Can we take the bond money, the two hundred thousand in bond money, rather than paving the rest of the roadway, which if it has ledge, you won't even finish-
The temporary turnaround, isn't it?
-a hundred feet with two hundred thousand, and just concentrate on the roadway that's there and fix that up?
Do you want me to grab the, um-
We may have to, but it's gonna leave that whole section undevelopable, that, that end.
That end, you know, that end there, there's only one lot on the left-hand side after the Taylor Rental lot that we were talking about.
And who owns that?
And that's owned by the Taylor Rental folks, Don Mason.
Well, do they have a decision? Does, does Taylor Rental have a decision?
Not yet.
Well, then, the last decision that we wrote on that undeveloped roadway-
Yep.
We told them, this is the last lot along this roadway that you're gonna be able to get developed.
Would that have been the MP Masonry building?
No, it's on the other side of the street.
Yeah, the MP Masonry building takes up the right side of, call it the cul-de-sac.
Right.
And then you have, right at the cul-de-sac, you have the Taylor Rental building, which they're coming through site plan review now. Beyond that, there's one more lot, and that one more lot, I think, is what you're talking about.
No, I was, I was also including the lot that they're coming in for, for Taylor Rental.
Oh, really?
Yeah, because the one next to them is the lot that we said, this is the last lot that can be developed until that, that cul-de-sac goes out. That's what we told them.
The Taylor Rental has frontage on that temporary cul-de-sac, correct?
Yeah, they do.
Yes.
Yeah.
The same people own the next lot that's not paved?
No, it's different people that own that last lot.
Or different folks, because basically, they, they can't get any permitting unless there's a, a base coat there and that's completed.
Yeah, they gotta extend the road.
Right.
So, I think we're talking about a, a later problem, I'm not sure we're there yet. And, and just to back up, I, I really think this lateral problem is a, is a much bigger problem that we have to solve-
Yeah.
-in the entire development.
But do you think it's a possible thing that each owner will accept that as part of the development of their site? I know we wanna do it now, and we sort of wanna get it done up front, and maybe they don't have the money, so maybe we front it, maybe it's a reimbursement later, but is it a fair position to take that that lateral should be their responsibility, or is that not a fair thing to suggest?
I hope that it's fair.
Right.
I think that would be a reasonable way to solve the problem.
I think that until we use the bond, the bond fund up, they're gonna suggest that nobody wants to contribute to anything until the bond money is used.
Yeah, I agree.
I think we should decide, this board, where to use that bond money and what do we want done as priority. Like Ray said, without the laterals in your kind of development on the lot, so that would seem to be one of the more important things. And then we can decide on, you know, how to best spend that money. Once that money's spent, and if the other hundred feet of roadway still isn't completed because the funding's gone, then there's an issue of-
Yeah, who pays?
Who pays for that?
Right.
So do like a cost to complete type thing and prioritize the list, basically?
Put it in a way that functions best for the people that are already there with the business.
Yeah, I think looking at everything and having sort of price tags, price tags on the laterals, price tags on this, price tag on the future, and then-
Print that out, the, the one that you sent us, that, that had the, the lot with a little dot in it, I think it had a dot in it, but it had the roadway in it, so people can get a good idea as to the, the length of the roadway that we're talking about.
Was it the site, the site plan for Five Phillips Way, no?
Was it Five Phillips Way?
That's the Taylor Rental building.
Then that's it.
I'll grab that site plan, I have it.
Oh, okay.
The issue will be with the fellow that owns the last lot that's not paved, and in theory, all of the owners are supposed to contribute to finish the paving of that lot.
And who owns it?
Get everything.
You said it was Taylor Rental?
No, Ray just said it was something different.
Oh, okay, it's not Taylor.
So, yeah, so the, the issue will be, if, if the owners are jointly responsible to finish the roadway because the bond's gone, then the person that owns that last lot is sort of stuck unless the owners get together and finish the completion of the roadway, of which he would have a, a small piece.
Small piece, yeah.
Yeah. It's a little bit of a mess, but I think we can get through it. Just, we have to bring all parties into it. So, once we do that, I think we'll have a decent dialogue and have a direction as to which way to go.
Well, it sort of depends on if anyone wants to start on that other development on one fifteen, the one that would connect through to it.
I don't think so. I had, I had a conversation probably six months ago with the owner of that property, and at that point, he was saying, I really don't think I'm gonna be doing anything on that property for a long time right now.
That property is a lot of ledge?
Yes, that one is a lot of ledge. So he, he intimated to me that he might develop that as one piece of, one piece of land and flow though-
Not go through, right.
Coming through.
Right.
That was his, that was his position at that point.
Which makes, which makes financial sense if there's ledge there to put the road through.
Right.
Yeah, well, if he, if he, but if he wants to develop that lot, we can just say, oh, no, we want the road to go through.
That's the Five Phillips Way, this is, um, this is the Shire Park subdivision.
Let's see. Am I looking at this right? This goes down towards the Animal Hospital, right?
Yep.
That's Sharon.
It's a police station down there.
Here, right?
Right, yeah.
So this is where, so, so you're saying that they have access to the cul-de-sac here?
Yeah, the driveway comes right off the cul-de-sac.
Yeah, but the driveway comes off the cul-de-sac in the middle of the roadway. They don't have frontage on the cul-de-sac. They're taking, they're, they're taking the frontage off of the roadway.
The cul-de-sac chews into their property, there's a, there's an access easement to put a cul-de-sac onto their property.
This is the cul-de-sac. So what they're saying is they could technically keep the cul-de-sac the way it is and make this work go.
So they're saying this cul-de-sac goes all the way to here?
Mm-hmm.
They're saying the cul-de-sac goes to here.
Mm-hmm.
Is, is that cul-de-sac built?
Mm-hmm.
To the end of their property line?
Right about here.
Over your shoulder.
So showing on this plan here, right about to the edge, so if you flip back, Steve's asking, does that mean it's going right here to that edge?
Here's the rest of the roadway.
So it is, it, I guess it's not as much as I thought it was. I thought it was the whole thing that had to be constructed.
This is one inch equals forty.
Still four hundred feet.
Yeah, two hundred feet, yeah.
Three, four, five, there's two hundred feet.
Two hundred feet is less than I thought it was.
Right there.
But still, that would use up the whole bond.
Yes, it would.
There's still bits of ledge there.
So it's a thousand dollars a linear foot?
It could be if there's ledge. Normally, or anomalous road, it's like five hundred, so if there's, of course, if, my guess is he stopped here for a reason, and my guess is the reason was they probably did some tests, or he found out that's very expensive, so he just left it for now. Because down here, this, this man down here on Pond Street, the reason he'd be crazy to put the road through is dull ledge. He's looking for to sell that at a very decent price because of all the, the site work that's-
But it was intended to go through to Pond Street.
But he'd have a lot of sites if he put that road through.
I'm not sure how big the sites are, I don't know what the land looks like.
Well, it's wide of the mess.
Right, right.
And it's a long road. It's probably seven hundred feet.
Right.
He'd be able to fit quite a few-
It all boils, it all boils down to how much does the road cost to put in, what can you get for a lot? Right. These are pretty sharp guys, so.
We'll be talking about this development next month.
The salvation is, the, is this, yeah, so he's got a cul-de-sac, so he's got some frontage. You could even formalize the cul-de-sac if that was gonna be the end of the road, he decided to abandon that. And there's two egresses out, at least we have a lot of money to finish up to make everybody, to make everybody connect. And the drainage has to be corrected too, right? The pipes that are sinking?
There is some drainage that was installed at Fourteen Shire, there was a basin that was collecting, and then that was, they were using PVC pipe, what do you call it, the parrot gated plastic.
Yeah, yeah.
And that was crushed in, in a bunch of places. So that had to be replaced, they replaced it with RCP.
So you wonder if it's a basin on the other side of the road too, isn't there, Ray? A big basin over by where Elite Foods bought their lot. I wonder if the piping to that basin is okay.
Have you been up here for a while?
Yeah, I actually was just up there recently.
So the cul-de-sac ends here?
Right there, yeah.
Yeah. I mean, of course, when I made my loop just recently, I actually did this like every-
So theoretically, we could formalize this cul-de-sac, the safety equipment, and leave it at that for now, and it'll be functioning.
The, the, is this the second lot? This is Two Phillips, Four and Two, right? Is this a combined lot?
I think it's combined, isn't it, Ray? Is this lot combined?
Yeah, that's all one lot. And that's that big masonry building.
And that's what Island Lighting bought, they bought this, I believe, and, yeah. So actually, this, this here wouldn't be needed for, for that lot there.
Unless they'd wanted to put something else in.
So where does this end now?
It ends right here.
Right there, yeah, with the cul-
Yeah, I can show it to you, it's right here.
And that was on plan number five.
Right here.
Yeah.
Here's the end of the lot.
Do you have the topo of the end there? That's not rated, right? What does it look like?
Some smoke here.
It's not too bad.
Going up?
Yeah, going up to two seventy, two sixty, yeah, two fifty, so twenty feet.
Twenty feet.
I don't see any basins on that side, John, aren't there piping on that side? Places that there are piping is on the lot that the town bought, coming out of that, going across to-
Pull this in here.
Yeah, that one goes across, across from the, the back of the warehouse.
Right, right.
And then there's, there's also piping, this is the Island Light, lighting entrance, we piped there recently.
This is all drain structure here, right?
It's all drain structure, this is, this is the line that was crushed.
I'm talking about the line across the way.
And then, hear that? Ties in here.
Right, yeah.
And all this drainage ties in there.
So where's, where's Shire and Sharon there?
This is Shire, Sharon would be this over here.
Okay.
And so this is, this is lot, Lot Four, Lot Five and Six, Seven, all Island Light.
That's Island Light, yeah, there's a lot of work going on over there, yeah.
Yeah, the problem is, Ray, if, if the town builds out this road, we have to do it at prevailing wage, don't we?
Yeah, and that's, that's really it to your money.
It's almost, well, it's doubled. It's almost like it'd be better if the owners of these lots could get together and release the bond directly to them and let them finish the thing at, at half the cost.
And there's, there's actually a way to do that, because there's this covenant that was recorded that says that the owners all have a share in this.
Right.
They could actually do that.
And a lot of the people, well, some of the folks up there are in construction, so they could, they would save half the cost.
Yeah, because that's what would've happened if it, the project went as a project should go, without the bankruptcy and such, is that contractor wouldn't have to use prevailing wage, pay prevailing wage.
So if they get together, Jeff, and they hide a contractor between themselves, so the price of work and the wages, and we forwarded the bond to them to pay for that, so you see how far that would go.
Yeah, because the bank, the bank is involved, it's, it's in their interest to have this work done also. There may be a way to get the bank off to agree together, this is the way it should go, and make all the corrections and get the-
Try to get as much as we can for our money, try to get a lot of the trees and everything, and also-
I think you use the phrase their money, because it is their money. As the owners, they, they bought this stake in this development, and they, they really should get what they, they paid for. The road, laterals that connect to their properties, and then they're on their own as well.
It's gonna be joint effort there with the owners and decide.
Yeah, so that's what I'm hoping to do, is I'd like to talk with Jared O'Neill, talk with his dad, stop the ball balling with them and then stop, and then have a meeting with the rest of the owners, or maybe one meeting with all the owners.
The town is, the town is an owner also.
Pardon me?
The town is an owner also.
Yeah, yeah, we're, 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 we're a stake in this, absolutely.
So I, if I were one of the owners, I'd wanna know first piece of information, what are these various costs? You know, what can the bond buy me?
I don't know.
I would even wanna know the cost of trees, maybe, you know, maybe I'd want that and not something else, I don't know.
Sure, Steve would like the trees.
He wants the trees, he'll leave it up.
I think that some of the owners actually brought up the fact that there's-
No trees, you're right, they have.
Yeah, but if it's laterals versus trees, then they choose the laterals.
Island Lighting put it, but it's all his own.
So when they're in construction, do you think they have the resources to pull their own costs together?
I would think so. I would think so.
And my other question is, do we have any enforcement or oversight in terms of standards? You know, we want to be able to make sure that it has to be constructed-
It has to be built to this. That's what the bond is for.
It's gonna be a fellow on the road, so.
So it has to be pricing that conforms to, I think that has to be clear, you know?
It's not, I mean, it's not uncommon for this to happen. And they have to build it to the approved plans, nothing else. They can build it better than the approved plans. How's that?
Is the curving in there?
They can get rid of the plastic pipe and put the concrete pipe in.
Is curving in there already?
Curving is in.
What kind of curving is it, Ray?
I believe it's sloped granite.
Sloped granite?
It should be.
You should know that.
Yeah, it should be. Definitely wouldn't be caulked.
No, 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 no.
No, it's not caulked. Sloped granite curb.
Well, that's a huge cost, so if that's done, that's a nice start.
I wanted to brief the board, get some feedback from you guys as to what you'd like to do, if this seems like a reasonable way to approach it, and then start moving forward with this. Boardists like me should be involved also, just so they know what's going on. They're not surprised by anything that's going on there.
Well, they control a lot.
Some of these projects, they don't go away.
They got a life of their own. Now, in some of these instances, I know that we have required people to construct a roadway in front of their lot, if they want to, if they want to build their lot, build out their lot. I mean, why wouldn't we be able to do that in this location also?
Because the guy in the last lot does not own the land for the street.
Well, it's got a name on it. It's got a-
No, I understand, but it's owned by the association?
Oh, you mean that lot is owned by the association?
It's part of this whole lot configuration. That's what I was saying. If he wanted to get his lot built, he'd have to go to the other owners and jointly participate, if we were shot, to finish that last couple hundred feet of road, so he'd have a buildable lot. And that's where the fight would come in between him and the rest of the owners, so.
Or would it be just an easement, like a construction easement, and, you know, to go and do it? I mean, why would they object to him doing it if he does it to the proper standards?
Right, but he wouldn't pay for it unless-
Oh, then they would object, yes, because they want, he's gonna use the money that's-
If he wanted to go put the road in himself, so he'd have a buildable lot, then, yeah, that would be, I'm sure that'd be fine with everybody, but that sort of negates the value of his lot.
What would it cost to do that?
$1,000 a foot?
I'd say, a rough average is probably around 500, unless there's ledge.
Probably values the lot.
That's why the guy in Pond Street is thinking of just not going through.
And what's the bond, Ray?
272.
Thank you.
Almost 300.
Almost.
Actually, that, for the existing road, if you're talking just running the laterals and fixing the few drainage pipes, and then reclaiming the roadway and paving it, that would probably go a long way.
Okay.
Yeah, for the existing road, if you didn't add the other 200 feet.
Exactly.
How many laterals are there? You gotta dig the whole thing up to put those laterals in, right?
Each lot has a lateral to it.
Each lot has an individual one?
Yes. And roughly, there are seven lots that need laterals.
That's not as big a job as you think.
Sounds like a good job to me.
It's not even paved. It's not even paved yet.
Oh, the whole roadway's paved, right?
It's got the base coat down, but there's patches everywhere.
Down five feet, that's not a real big cost.
Oh, it's only down five feet? Oh, okay.
But it's still a cost. It's, you know, somebody's gotta pay for it, and we can't do it until we pave the road. Otherwise, if we do pave the road, then you got five years to wait before you can do a lateral. And you know how things go. Mr. Murphy is always at work with his laws, and, you know, as soon as we get done paving, somebody's gonna come in and they're gonna want to put a lateral in.
You can ask the public works, but the bond may go a long way to finish most of what's there now to make it functional and looking good. As far as the other one, that'll be the, that'll be the sticking point with that fellow that owns the other lot.
It seems more like a conversation with the other guy. This one seems like a pretty straightforward solution. That I'd be more concerned about, I mean, we're here to look for the future, right? Be more concerned about that problem.
John, is this a case where maybe the bond, it was sufficient at that point in time? I mean, as the years have gone by and the cost of construction goes up, up, up? So now it's not enough? It would have been enough eight years ago?
Oh, it sounds like two. We didn't know that the laterals weren't in, for instance. I don't think we knew that.
No, we didn't know that, right, so there's- We just found that out.
And you can't assume that there's ledge when you probably do your cost-to-complete, so, you know, it's probably a bunch of factors. But, yeah, I mean, we've seen in the last two years escalations upwards of 10%, just in the last two years of construction industry. It's just skyrocketing, so.
I mean, that's why the developer walked away from the project. I mean, these are the reasons why, I'm sure. Looking at it and, like, make that decision. Cost of construction, how much is the lot's worth? It doesn't add up. Walk away.
It's a loss.
I would guess that that's why he stopped right there. It makes no sense to leave the last 200 feet of roadway.
You hit some impediment.
That's your connecting point to Pond Street, which gives you a whole separate egress, which makes the lots more marketable.
Yeah, yeah.
Be a reason to stop.
Can you show me the town owns the lot over here?
Isn't that what a landscaper, landscaper was putting his place in? I never expected that place to go out of places like that.
This is Sharon. This is the lot here. The drainage easement. The drainage sits on the street here. Leach is into there, and flow that way. The town-owned lot is 10. It's 10. Millby kind of sits here.
So the leach field is on our property?
There's, yeah, there's a stormwater system on the property.
That's the police station, right?
And the manholes are in for that.
Didn't they have some problem with the paving in that lot, in that parking lot and everything? Didn't they have problems?
This, this is not paved. It's all gravel.
Over where the drainage system is there? That's not paved?
No, it's all gravel.
Oh, I thought that was paved.
There's an entrance right here, right here, right here. You can kind of make a circle around it. This lot's occupied. This lot's vacant. So if it's all right with you, that's the plan of attack at this point. Just come up with a better plan. Just waiting on John to come up with a better plan.
Just a couple of administrative things, if I could?
Yep.
Nancy handed me a pile of mail. It goes back to Quiddays. At any rate, quickly thumbing through it, I discovered there were 21 letters here from the DPW to various owners for snow and ice treatment recovery that have, I don't know how many of these have been paid, but there's 21 of them here that were issued.
From this year?
What's the date on them? Some of them are this year, some of them are last year.
My last conversation with Bob McGee, I believe there are maybe one or two that have not been paid, but the rest have paid.
The rest have been, well, that's good news, okay. The second thing is, I don't, how conversant are you with your counterpart in the Town of Walpole? Do you know who it is?
Can't remember who it is, but you got a question?
Yeah, well, I just came across here in a piece of mail from the Town of Walpole Planning Board. There's a fellow named Lou Petrosi. He's gonna put in a seven-unit lot on Summer Street over there. And, you know, you just might call in a friendly way, give him a heads up as to, right, as to Petrosi, and, you know?
All right. Anyone else have anything? Any other business? Ray?
No, just what I would say, Walter was mentioning the fact that there's a number of the letters, Ray, and you sent, with the exception of perhaps two, the developers have made payment to reimburse the town. I think the board should be made aware if there's any business that any developers who have proceeds outstanding, that we be made aware before conducting business in support of those projects. Consider it done.
Yeah, that's a good time to catch people when they want to put in an application. By the way, did you know you owed us money?
Unfortunately.
Hey, you want to renew your driver's license, son of a gun? You got all these tickets here.
Yeah.
Yes, I did, but I thought you hoped, I was hoping you'd forget.
Okay, is there anything else? Looks like we're gonna be out of here early tonight. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
All those in favor?